All right, the time having arrived and a quorum being present, this meeting of the Cecil Township Supervisors is hereby called to order. Will you first please join us in a salute to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, thank you for that. Carol, let the records show that Supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney and Shavani are in attendance. In addition, Don Janus, our Township Manager, Jack King, our Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukowinski, our Chief of Police, Dan Miller, our Southbridge Manager, or Interim Fire Chief, hopefully soon to be, not interim anymore, Ted Wolford. Our Engineer tonight is Joe Seitz from Gateway Engineers and our Solicitor, Gutchon Moore. As we always do, if you have a, citizens have any comments on any of the agenda items you see, feel free to make them tonight, right now. If it's something unrelated to the agenda, we still ask you to wait till the later part of the meeting. So anybody on an agenda item?
Item two oh-
Name for your-
Candy Wathier, Elm Drive, two oh three, 2024. Can you please inform the taxpayers what the salary will be for this position?
We will after, if it gets approved. I'm not going to reveal that because I never know if it's going to be approved or not.
Okay.
So it's not a public document yet.
Okay.
That was easy.
Oh yeah. Will you also reveal whether or not the insurance is included in that amount or something?
We will. It becomes, the whole contract becomes a public document once it's approved. Anybody else have any agenda items? I do have a couple announcements to make. We had an executive session today on litigation relating to unfair labor practice filed by a police officer. And we also had, talked about litigation with the DEP on that Meweni Road, that foundation that's still existing there. Let's see. All right, just our announcements. The Board of Supervisors will hold a continuation of a public hearing regarding the oil and gas ordinance tomorrow on Wednesday, September 4th at 6:00 PM. A special meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held immediately following that hearing to consider that pending ordinance. Next thing I want to jump to is, we don't always, the next thing I want to jump to is, back in February, this board appointed a steering committee of our, with our fire chief and our two members from each of our volunteer fire departments. And they worked from February to just recently. Their goal was to, in recognizing that the manpower shortage with volunteers, it's just making their departments suffer in order to keep a good service for the residents, they decided to come together and come up with a merger that might put all their equipment and assets together and have one department that can function for the whole township. So I want to bring them all up here now because they worked hard at it. And this is really a momentous time for the township. And these, the departments have existed independently since the 50s. And now that they're, it was a tough decision, but they are working towards that merger. So if you'd come up here, I'd like to introduce, I know Stash isn't here, but Ron Stanton is here, Matt Bloom, Brigham Bloom. Matt Maybun is not-
No relation though.
Matt Maybun isn't available, but Ed Poverk is here and of course, our interim chief Ted Wolford. So I'd like you to just give a, give them a little synopsis. Any of you that want to say anything, I'd like you to give a little synopsis of what you've experienced and what you see down the line for the departments. Did you hear that, Ron?
As Supervisor Cassiola stated, volunteerism is down. In 1970, we had about 360,000 volunteers in Pennsylvania. Today, that number's fallen below 37,000. So the volunteers do struggle every day to respond to calls. For the Volunteer Fire Service to survive in Cecil Township, the merger is a must. This will bring three of our volunteer fire departments together under one umbrella. That'll be one vision, one united volunteer fire department. We will have one set of standards. We will have, sorry, I'm a little nervous because this is exciting time for the fire department. The volunteers are the most important thing in our township. I started out as a volunteer and I'm fortunate enough to be paid to do what I do today. And some of these volunteers have the opportunity to grow into that as well. So back in February, we formed the steering committee and that's what you see here today has got us to this point. This past week, these three companies came together unanimously voting at all three of their meetings to sign the merger agreement to begin the process under the Department of Economic Development, who's going to provide us an expert consultant to assist us with the process. This is a huge step in the right direction for our firefighters in Cecil Township. It's an exciting time to be a part of the fire service in Cecil Township. I'm going to let these guys tell you the rest because they did most of the work on the steering committee to make this happen.
Thank you. Matthew Bloom, I'm the Chief of Muse, Station 29. Just a little background, I came from a combination department in Virginia. So I kind of, I've seen how well that works, paid and volunteers and how they merge together to, you know, to form a unified front for fire service for the community. So there's going to be complete coverage, you know, AM, PM, all hours of the day. So that's kind of what we were looking at. And as Teddy was mentioning, volunteerism is down. And with all the volunteers, we're paying jobs that are during the day. So we recognize that need, that we needed to have people step in and have coverage during the daylight hours. I mean, we're getting busier, our community is growing. And looking at that and said, there's a real need and it's bigger than us and our pride and all our individual stations. It's about the community and that's what we wanted to do. And we all kind of put it together and we said, hey, we're going to put those differences aside. We're going to look at what we can all offer and put collectively our manpower, all our apparatus and bring it together under one umbrella. And that's kind of what we've done. And we've kind of, as I'm sure the committee knows, we've kind of, we've tried that before and it didn't really work as well. With Teddy's leadership, it's really taken off. And there's a lot of, everyone kind of gets together, we don't have any more roadblocks and we're really working together. You know, as we all kind of talk, you know, the township was generous enough to help support us by getting us a new engine, which we desperately needed. So everyone has kind of reached out and all of branch and we're all kind of coming together for the common cause and that's providing community coverage for, for you all. And that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure everyone's safe. If there's an emergency, we're answering the call at all hours. And that's all we want to do and that's what we're trying to do for everyone. Yep.
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Brigham Bloom, Captain of Muse Volunteer Fire Department. I've been a Cecil Township resident for about 14 years. I've been a member there for 11. Joined shortly after my in-laws' house burnt down in Bel Vernon. And reason it burnt down was a lack of volunteers, so I thought I could put my money where my mouth was and do something about it. Earlier this year, Chief Wolford approached me and asked me if I'd participate in the, in the steering committee meetings. And I took it, you know, wholeheartedly. And I can say that honestly, everybody working together has really paid off. You know, he's always listened to our thoughts or concerns. We've worked through them. There's been a lot of give and take, but we've all worked together and really hammered something out that I think is going to be a solid, you know, a solid platform for the future in Cecil Township. Teddy's been extremely organized, receptive, helpful with any, any needs for the companies. Under his direction, we've assembled a united set of bylaws, unified, well, uniform spec, instituted new radio communications to limit, you know, limit traffic. So we only have important things coming across the radio that's needed. Just, you know, just excellent at assembling thoughts and outlines. So I can't say enough good thanks and I'm happy to be here and part of the team.
Hi, I'm Ron Stanton, the Assistant Chief at Station 28. I've been there for 21 years now. And the growth we've seen in the amount of call volumes in this township is far outrunning the resources that we've had. And working with Teddy here in the steering committee over the last several months, everyone's had an input and it has given us a direction to where we can provide a better emergency services to the residents of Cecil Township. And I'm just glad to be a part of that.
Thank you. My name's Ed Poverk. I'm the Treasurer at Cecil Township Number Three. Been a member of the fire department for 53 years and, too, too long. During those 53 years, we've seen a lot of changes. First year I was a member there, we answered probably 35 calls. They were brush fires and barn fires and maybe a house fire. Right now, we're answering 350 calls. And there are anything and everything from apartment buildings, commercial buildings, structure fires, vehicle accidents, hazardous materials, on and on and on. The purpose of this committee is to guide the fire service in Cecil Township to provide the best possible fire service for the folks that live here. And I've lived here for 71 years and I'm not going to leave anytime soon. So I want to make sure that when I need somebody at some point down the line, somebody that's going to show up, that's going to know what they're doing. And we have that here with these gentlemen. I get off my topic here. Change is tough and we are experiencing tough times with some of these changes. Some of the people are hesitant to change. I'm hesitant to change too. But in the, at the end of the day, we want the fire protection in Cecil Township to be as good or better than all the other services that this township provides. Police, EMS, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and all the other services we get here. And under this new jointure that we're moving forward with, I'm confident that we are going to have that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much. I think there are more volunteers here that work under these guys. If you'd just please stand up so we can see you, the volunteers that aren't, weren't up front here. I know there's some of you here, please stand up. Actually, Ed, wait, 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 stand up. I'd like to, each, each of you, give us your name, please. Could you stand up and just give us your name so they know who you are? And speak up too, okay? Thank you, Patrick. Good. Rest of the guys, please stand up. We just want to see you again. Give us your name, please. When they said change is tough, after 60 to 70 years of being independent, it's understandable. They had their own territories and now to, to offer to come together for a better service, that's, it says, a lot of credit to do them. So again, thank you. I do have to announce, we have a family bingo on Sunday, September 15th at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Department Number Three here on Millers Run Road. Doors open at 11:00 AM and bingo begins at noon. There will be a kitchen there, Chinese auction, et cetera. Our Cecil Township Historic Society will meet on Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00 PM in this building right here. Jordan Tax Service will be at the Municipal Building on Friday, September 20th from noon, noon, 9:00 AM to noon. Tuesday, from September 20th, from 9:00 AM to noon. And Friday, September 27th, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM to collect this year's school taxes if you want to pay in person. And our 36th Annual Cecil Township Fall Festival will be held on Saturday, September 28th from 11:00 to 7:00. And Sunday, September 29th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I just want to mention that our Township Manager, Don Janus, was voted by the, that Board of the Washington County Association of Township Officials to be an executive board member. And that's pretty commendable and I want to give him a hand too. Thank you, Don. Our staff reports. Don, you can go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be brief. I'm sure you're aware, we have no new AV system. The promises and the supply chain, supply chain shortage is a real thing, at least when it comes to electronic equipment. I have assurances that that equipment will be installed next Monday, the 9th. So hopefully by our next VOS meeting, we'll be up and running and we will have improvements. Everyone will be able to hear. That's what we're aiming for, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure everybody heard about this. It was on the news. On August 29th, Cecil Intermediate School had a student walk away from the school here on Millers Run Road. I want to thank everyone that volunteered, the first responders, the fire department, EMS, the officers that were there in assisting, searching for the student. I'm sure everyone heard, they did find him. He did walk about six miles on the monitor trail. But again, we appreciate all the help and it was a perfect outcome of finding the student. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sean. Jack, anything on the building and zoning? Okay. Joe, anything new?
No, you have our written report and I'll comment on items that are on the agenda as we move forward.
Okay. Gretchen, Solicitor's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This month was primarily day-to-day legal assistance with some subpoenas, right to no request, zoning and code enforcement is needed. We assisted on a temporary easement that had a bit of a wrinkle to it. Been dealing with the DEP on the 22 Mile Henny, which you mentioned, and worked on a settlement agreement in the first choice matter that is on the agenda for this evening.
That's it. And Dan, okay, Ted?
The only thing I have to add is, we've been working with the three volunteer fire departments to get annual physicals done for the firefighters. These physicals have been known at other places to catch things like cancer and heart disease, to get firefighters treated before those problems become bigger problems and they can't do this job anymore. The firefighters can then, you know, if they do end up having some sort of issue found during their physical, move forward with getting with their doctor and getting that treated. So we're looking at getting our volunteer in, paid staff, sent to go to a local physician company that does this for fire departments. Or there's also ones that are available that will come to us and they'll set up for like two days with their mobile trailer and provide the physicals for us. So we're looking at pricing on those. That's all I have.
You said you're looking so far, but you're going to keep working towards that, I take it?
Yes, yes.
I don't know what involvement we'll have to have other than if there's expenditures for us to approve it.
Yeah, we can share the proposals that we receive with you and see if there's any way the board wants to help.
By all means, stay on it then. That's good. Now, Dan, Southbridge report?
Our report's been submitted and just a reminder, we do have the CPR class for hands-only CPR, October 5th, Saturday, which is following Fall Festival, Saturday following that. One o'clock will be hands-only and Stop the Bleed. And at 3:00, we will have Heart Saver AED, which is a certifying course. So registration is open on our website, so please register for the course, excuse me, if you intend to take it.
You're going, I'm going to get on my high horse for a second. For the third time this year, I was at North Turbane Park at my son's soccer picnic and one of the soccer players choked. And it took 12 minutes, not because of anything North Turbane did, but because of miscommunication between dispatch and North Turbane for anybody to get there. If there hadn't been parents, there were two of us, in the pavilion that knew what to do, that person would not be here today. Learn CPR. Don't rely that somebody else will know. Don't get those choker devices because by the time you get them and then come back and realize like in the moment, like you just need to know what to do. So come to the class, it's free. We're going to continue to offer them. If you can't come here, go somewhere else. But know what to do in an emergency. Like afterwards, I had an epic meltdown, but in the moment, like I knew what to do because I, this is my third time going through it with Dan. He's amazing, by the way, and so, so is his daughter, or is it your daughter or daughter-in-law, daughter, that comes to help. So know what to do. It's going to be here.
Hey, thank you, Cindy. For our resolutions, for number 194, 2024, it's to consider the application for payment number 16 for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility. It's to Schultz Electric in the amount of $25,940.68. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Carol, for one, the motion carries. For item number 194, 2024, it's to consider application payment number three for the work completed on Contract A of 2024 for our pavement maintenance program in the amount of $51,540.43 to Independent Enterprises.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Carol, the motion carries four zero to one, one abstention. For 196, 2024, they consider the application for payment number one for the work completed to date for Contract B, 2024, on our pavement maintenance program in the amount of $407,305.11 to Amelia Millie Sons.
So moved.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? I didn't hear, did I hear?
No.
Okay, Carol, the motion carries four to one. Number 197 dash 2024, this item was a subject of a conditional use hearing we had early on in, at 6:00 today. It was item number 197, 2024. It's consider approving a conditional use application for property located at 6,000 Town Center Boulevard in the SD Special Development District. They want to modify the land use category in this property to allow for some, both actually primarily residential, but some commercial property. And the motion we make, if you so make it, will be conditioned upon advertising and having approval of a tax zoning change in our item section 913G2. And that's where, it's a category of, land use category residential, we're going to allow them to put business, what do you say, business office? And there's one other thing on that.
Apartments afterwards, on top.
So we're approving this condition on this?
Professional office, professional business office. We're going to add that, the motion.
The motion is to approve this conditioned upon that.
Yeah, completing that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Everybody understand that?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. For item number 198, 2024, it's consider the application 2024-0015 for the Gillespie Subdivision Plan. It is contingent upon approval from the Washington County Sewage Council. The applicant is Fred Zaccor of 30 Vertical Drive out on Cecil and Justiceville Road in a C1 general commercial district and a R1 low-density residential district. The Planning Commission recommended approval and subject to engineering comments on August 15th. And Joe, I think they did address them?
Yeah, they've addressed them. I put it up there on the screen for you. What they're doing is they're subdividing Lot 2, which is on the right-hand side of the road.
Wait, Jack, does he have a pointer? I mean, I don't know if they can see what you're referring to. We can see it here.
Yeah.
You have a pointer?
Pointer here.
Okay.
He's coming.
Jack, do we have a pointer?
Okay, thank you.
It's still high-tech.
What, what they're doing is they're subdividing this lot number two from the property on the left side of the road and retaining this for future development. So it's just a very simple subdivision. All our comments have been addressed.
All right, is there a motion to approve that Gillespie subdivision?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For 199, 2024, it's to consider the application 2024-0018 for the Liberty Grove Parcel Plan. The applicant is Alan Rank of Rising Road. He's in the low-density residential district. Again, the Planning Commission recommended approval, contingent on some engineering comments. And Joe, did they?
Yeah, all our engineering comments have been addressed. And what they're doing is this Lot 200, that's right down along Rising Road, is being subdivided from the remaining property to be sold off. And then I believe Mr. Rank is retaining this Lot 200 for future development of lots. That's what he's doing.
So that's basically still a simple subdivision?
Simple subdivision, yes.
Any questions on it? Is there a motion to approve the Liberty Grove Parcel Plan?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 200 dash 2024, it's to consider a settlement agreement related between Cecil Township and, versus the Cecil Township Zoning Hearing Board and First Choice, Inc. It's case number 354 in a Commonwealth Court. But it has to be conditioned on approval by our zoning township, or zoning hearing board. They're a party to it. It's a settlement of that property on West End Drive where a contractor wanted to expand a building there and there was an issue with the zoning hearing board and then with our board. So this is basically a settlement agreement that, as long as the zoning hearing board also votes for it, then it, once our approval is done here, it'd be basically a done deal. So we got to vote on it first. So is there any, are there any questions on it? Is there a motion to approve this settlement agreement?
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. For number 201 dash 2024, it's to consider certification of the 2025 MMO for the Uniform Pension Plan at $842,831. And Dan, oh, Don, that's the, I mean, that's, that's set. Is there a motion to approve that certification?
I'll make a motion.
So I'll second it.
There's a motion and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. I'm not going to ask for a no anymore. I'm not going to ask for a no anymore, I don't want to confuse Carol. If I, I'm going to pause, if you, if you want to say no, please say so. For twenty-two oh two dash twenty-twenty-four, it's consider the certification of twenty-twenty-five MMO for the non-uniform pension plan at four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries. For two oh three dash twenty-twenty-four, consider a motion to approve an employment contract for our Cecil Township Fire Chief with Ted Wolford, where he'll no longer be a acting fire chief. Is there a motion to approve that contract?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Effective when, Tom?
I, I think, I think he said for his notice with his current employee around the end of the month, twenty-seventh or something?
Okay.
Thirty?
So effective September thirtieth, okay.
That works for us. Thank you for that, too. We need, for item two oh four dash twenty-twenty-four, it's the approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes from Monday, August fifth, at our regular monthly meeting. First of all, are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries. For item two oh five dash twenty-twenty-four, consider the general funding invoices from August first through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Carol, the motion carries. Now we can get to the residents. If you have some issues you want to bring up or comments or questions, please come to the microphone first and give us your name just for the record. Your comments aren't necessarily part of the record, but your name will be and the subject will be.
Kevin Camerson, fifteen Swahart Road. Last monthly meeting at the Citizens Comments, I brought up about the total cost to date spent on the revision to the oil and gas ordinance. I was told to initiate a right to know, which I did. The right to know was sent on August seventh. It was recognized on August twelfth due to staff vacations, which I'm okay with that. But what I'm not okay with is, you know, first of all, I did not, you know, receive, you know, my response till the nineteenth, even though, excuse me, the twenty-first. Even though the letter was dated to nineteen, so I received an email on the twenty-first. So that was not in compliance, it was a couple days late. Although, the letter said the nineteenth, so I guess you go by the letter, even though I didn't get it to the twenty-first.
You have the right to appeal with the OLR.
Oh, I'm just, just stating facts, okay?
Okay, we won't have to.
And, you know, all along, you know, it's, and the reasons, you know, it must be a form letter, you know, it says, "The extent and nature, you know, request precludes a response within required timeframe. The records access needs a retrieval." He's been paying bills for last year on this, you got to know how much money he's spent, you know? And then it says, "Lack of resources." You know, he's all campaigned on transparency. The township citizen need to know the total cost spent to date.
I would think, Mr. Camerson?
Mr. Camerson.
You can still answer, Don.
If you did not get your response within the statutory requirement of thirty days, then I could suggest that maybe you have an issue, but that thirty-day period hasn't elapsed yet.
I would just like to say too, we don't have that in an Excel spreadsheet. If we did, we would have just sent it to him. What needed to happen was those bills needed to go to our solicitor. She needs, it's not just separated by oil and gas. All of our solicitor's bills have everything that's been billed. So now she has to go through them and redact every single line item for everything that isn't related to what he requested. We are doing that, but it is a, as you can imagine, a timely and, or time-consuming process. So he will get the information he requested within the thirty-day time period that we are allowed, but she's one person, or she's, and her staff is one person, and Don is one person. So we are working on it, we're not hiding things, we're just getting him what he asked for.
All right, anybody else have any general comments? Questions? Hopefully?
Hi, AC Roland, fifty-two Sycamore Street. I've got eight questions for myself and from the Village of Muse. I'll read them off first because of the three-minute. So, and then you guys can answer them afterwards. One, can we get a report number or a follow-up on the sinkhole behind the municipality building? Because the water seems quite low, and is that due to it still going down the well? Was that cap in the diversion successful? It's just low due to water, weather conditions, two. Do we have an update on the leaking roof and skylights from last meeting? You guys are going to get up there and take a look and get us some kind of idea of what's going up, going on up there. Three, do we have any follow-up on the hit and run of the child out here? I think his name was Charles. A lot of concerned citizens never got a description of the car or, because people want to help find the person that hit him. So any information that you can offer to us, we're more than happy and want. Four, do we have an update on the new microfrozen system, which just found out, a next meeting, we're going to have that, woo-woo? I want to give a huge shout-out and thank you to Sean and all the police officers who've been doing the extra patrols through Muse. It seems to be working between them and the neighborhood watch we created. We've really curbed the issues, although there have been some issues on Chafoney Road where they got every one of the signs there, all of them. And some people say because the kids go out there first, watch the sunset, maybe we could get an extra patrol out there to curb that. Any follow-up to the pipe getting moved at the bridge in Muse under, for Walnut Street, Muse Bridge there that's steadily falling into the creek? And then we've got some concerned citizens with the school bus stop in front of the fire hall. Two kids almost got hit crossing Muse Bishop Road. They're wondering about a fire, why there's no guard there for the kids to cross. I talked to Sean and he can answer this, but I want to get it on record because these are emailed in to me. Possible flashing yellow light, move back further. Maybe a new signage about slowing down because you come over that hill and bam, you're at the fire hall and that falls outside of the school zone speed limit and it falls outside of that yellow flashing light. What's the legality for four kids per bus seat when they are designed to only seat three? I don't know, I just said I would ask. The next school board meeting is on the thirteenth. Multiple parents have had no luck calling the bus garage. Many residents called, expressing Jordan Mauer, I hope I pronounced that right, is a person who's been hired as the bus coordinator and they are getting nowhere with him. And finally, could I ask a question about the blowout from last week? And have you guys received any information from the DEP or the EPA on the blowout that happened with Range?
I want to answer a couple things right off the bat. The hole has been sealed by the DEP, it's sealed. There's lack of water in the stream, it's because of the dry weather, but it's sealed. The leaking skylight that's up here. I personally have a roof expert. I called him the next day and he's, he's on restricted ladder work for two more weeks, I think. He'll get up there, but he can't climb up the ladder to get on a roof and that's a steep roof. It's either ten-twelve or something and he needed a couple of days. I don't know if Bill had somebody to look at it, he's not here tonight. But we're on it. If it's, if it's just flashing, we'll get that fixed and, but we're trying to be on it.
Well, I mean, you guys had discussed about just getting rid of the skylights altogether because it was?
Well, that's a whole separate story. That may or may not be done if we have to put a new roof on it, but right now, I just want to find out about the condition of the roof and the flashing.
Yeah, with the weather coming in, that's all.
Yeah, we know that. That pipe under the bridge, Joe, do you have any update on the Walnut Street project?
The, the contractor ordered a call for it about two weeks ago. It's about an eight to twelve-week lead time, so we're, you know, six to ten weeks till it gets here.
So, I think last week, they, or last section, they mentioned that there was a pipe, water?
There's a water, there's a water line, we're working with the water company to get that relocated. Yeah.
And if you guys can just keep us in, in loop in the township, in the village so that we know when we're going to have water outages?
I don't think you're going to have, I, I, I don't quote Ms., but I don't think you're going to have any water outages.
Okay.
All right, about the school district, I mean, you got to talk to the school board. That's, if you're not getting a response from the transportation department, I'm sure the school board and administration will answer you.
Well, that is kind of more directed for Sean because I know he's at the meetings, but thank you for answering.
And with the DEP on that, that incident with Range, we're going to talk about it tomorrow. We have a hearing tomorrow on that. The rest of them, or you said you were satisfied with the issue?
Yeah, 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 I'm glad that we're going to finally get this new system in.
All right, hey, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right, anybody else?
All right, back. You approved it, can I get my questions answered?
Yes. Don, would you make some contracts, copies available?
I don't need a contract, I just need questions, two questions, that's all.
All right, Don, you have any?
I can, I can answer them, I have the contract right here.
Gretchen has a copy.
Candy, what's your, I have it right here, what's your question?
My question was what the salary was going to be and if it include, if that amount includes the insurance or the insurance is additional.
The salary is ninety-five thousand dollars as the township fire chief and ten thousand dollars to be our emergency management coordinator. And yes, he is, because he's a full-time employee, he's eligible for township-sponsored health insurance.
So that would be an addition, or is that included?
Yeah, that's an addition.
It's an addition.
Okay, thank you.
That was easy, Candy, thank you. All right.
Cindy, I have one question.
Sure.
As far, or, Tom, with Teddy, our new fire chief, are you getting emergency management certified by the state?
Yes, I will be.
You will be?
Yes.
How long is that program that you have, or the, your?
They have the classes throughout the year. They have the classes at the county public safety department throughout the year. So I'll be able to go up there as the classes are scheduled to attend the classes and get the certifications. And some of them are online as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do, I have a few quick things. Can we clarify for the public, because I've had a bunch of people ask me how long Joe Klinger's Road is going to be closed and it won't be like a throughway, so, correct? So people will have to access it based on where you live from either side?
Yes, they'll have to access it from either side. They're supposed to close it next Monday, the ninth of September. It'll probably be closed between three and four weeks. I've already notified the school district and let them know that they need to reroute the school buses. There will be a detour set up to reroute the traffic.
Are we notify, we notify the residents?
The contractor is going to notify the residents this week on both ends.
Jack, can you put a notification on the website? I've been asked that a lot.
Sure.
So, okay, thank you. I was going to say about the CPR class, attend the CPR class. I've had a lot of residents, and I'm sure you have too, as board members, reach out to me about people knocking on their doors. I think we need to have Gretchen take a second to look at our peddler's permit and what we're allowing and what we can limit. I've had a lot of people say that it's sometimes it's the same people over and over again. Some people, times they're having, you know, five and six people on a weekend. We just, and we're getting blamed because they're saying that we're giving out these permits to allow these people to come to their homes. So if the board's okay with it, I'd like to have Gretchen take a look at it and see, you know, what limitations we can put on so our residents aren't being bombarded with people. That's it, that's all I have. That's it.
Supervisor Dizio?
Aye.
Supervisor Mourning?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Supervisor Chafoney?
Aye.
Supervisor Castiola?
Thank you.